...for you. So I'd like to go ahead and this part I see that we have the Ethics Act on this. I guess I'm required to do this from here on. So we'll do this. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. The members of the county board commissioners are advised hereby under your duty under the state government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflict and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this board of county commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. And I know and I respect this board and we have taken heed to that whether I've read the statement or not, but it's now required that this be done. So with that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Weis, if you would please, to lead us in the invitation. I ask Billy Holberd to lead us in the place of allegiance. Please.
Father God, thank you for this meaningful day, Lord. Would I keep your kindness, Lord, your grace and mercy that you've been a benefactor, Lord, over the years? We just ask you that you'd go with us in this meeting, Lord, that we would, Lord, make decisions that would be right for the county, Lord, and that we would always put you first, Lord, in everything that we do, Lord. We ask you to forgive us for many sins and short-termings, Lord, and we just thank you, Lord, that you seem forget that we're still able to go, Lord. Lord, we ask you to be with one that's also a one, Lord, Lord, our friends, favorite for many years, Lord, just to be with the family, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Go with us in this meeting. Lovely thing. Amen.
United States of America, and to the Republic from which it spans, one nation under your eyes, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would need you to entertain a motion, please, for approval of the agenda.
If I may, I need to make a couple of changes. I, number eight, will have discussion on the automated doors that the health department along with Ms. Garland, what is the subject for later discussion to discuss.
Oh, it's the, I'd like public medical records, but then.
What's that?
Medical records.
Okay, they'll all come under I number eight.
Number nine, Ms. Hill is going to class the manager cable, be presenting, be presenting number nine. And the word, where I put the B, that was a proposal, not a bid. And then number twelve, there came another change where someone will have a number six and also.
Number six?
Yeah, change on the number five and six. That was on nine, twelve.
Nine and twelve, change where five and number six. This all pertains to the transit?
Yes, it does.
All right. Are there any other changes in the board? If not, you entertain a motion that we accept the agenda. Okay, have a motion? We have a second. Any special comments? I mean, all producing like the pandemic, all of those lines on. This time, we need to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes in workshop meeting and regular meeting of six seventeen, special meeting of six twenty-six, and bullet hearing on seven eleven. Bullet? Have a motion? We have a second. Any special comments? I'd like to thank our clerk for keeping these up time. It really helps me out. Okay, have a motion, second. All for it, say what you can. Those, thank you very much. This time, we recognize a fine officer, Detective Garland, for our findings report.
Good evening. I'm fairly short of sleep, so please don't hold it tight. This is the financial highlights for June 30th of two thousand and thirteen. Recognize that as I give you these results, the final results when we go get through the audit will change somewhat, but I'm giving kind of some projections that I made for where we're standing at the end of June, that it will be by any chance the final numbers, just because we have more bills that come in and more receivables that we have to accrue on our credit side. So we closed the month of June in the general fund checking account at a total, if you're looking on your highlight pages, on page one, highlight in yellow, at three million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and nine hundred and one dollars. That is up from this time last year at a total cash balance of three million and sixty dollars. Just to give you a little history, when we started back in nine-ten, we had one point six million dollars in the bank. So we have basically more than never our cash due to a lot of hard work in cutting expenditures and chasing revenues. So I'm real pleased with those results as far as our cash balance is concerned. If you want to flip to page four, as far as our tax collections, or actually flip back to page two, and I forgot to highlight this, we had total collections for real property taxes for the two thousand twelve year at fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars for June, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars in rental taxes for the prior years for a total tax collection for the month, ninety-four thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. You'll scoot across one column. This time last year in June, we collected twenty-two thousand five hundred. So the work that we've been doing on collections is paying off. We did collect twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars in DMV, which is down a level from this time last year. Now I'm going to flip to page four. Those numbers aren't highlighted. We have collected a real prior year and current year property taxes this fiscal year, five million two hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Last year, we had collected five million and sixty-three thousand. So we have a positive variance of ninety-two thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. Once again, these collection efforts are paying off. DMV collections for the year were two hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars. We will begin to see those new, that new system going into place. I'm hoping to see those numbers jump up because we did, we're still kind of in the red. Last year, we were down twenty-three, seven. This year, we were down fourteen hundred in collections. So while we're still, we're making progress, we're still, I'm just not happy with that. And that's, but this new system, I think, is going to spell a difference. The estimated real property tax collection rate for the year ending June 30th of thirteen was ninety-six point seven five percent. That's way up from the year before at ninety-two point two-two percent. Part of that is we had one taxpayer that there was a large lease, if you'll remember, this time last year we made. And so that had pushed our tax collection rate down. So that rebound partly is because we started, you know, we've been really hammering hard on collections, but the other part is that release. That'll be good news for us when we get ready to budget this time next year because if you recall, part of our issue with budgeting this past thirteen, fourteen was that our tax collection rate was lower. We have to use the prior year audit tax collection rate to estimate revenue based on. So having our tax collection rate at ninety-six percent is going to help when we're trying to do the budget. This coming year, we're going to need all the help we can get because I want to share some, not so positive news here and here and then. So I'm real pleased with that. Just to give you, I've added a line to that little schedule, just to give you an idea of what we've got out in outstanding in property taxes for the year of two thousand and twelve. We've got a hundred and sixty-two thousand, it's a change, and property taxes still needs to be collected. And then the prior nine years is two hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and forty dollars. So that's a total of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, and we're chasing time to get collected. That is an improvement because when we were going through a budget, that number we're sitting at had a million dollars. So I'm really commanding the tax collection department when the board said, let's go and do these foreclosures and start this process, we really started seeing some tax collections come in. So I'm really pleased with that. Any questions so far?
I have one on the DMV. I've got to say tax bill.
Yes.
I'm one of those who gets caught in a crossover, right?
Yes, you're one of those who got caught in a crossover.
Huh? You too?
Yeah, two as well. So I'm getting, yeah, there's going to be quite a few of us that are going to get two kills in one year.
Well, I mean, I knew that somebody was going to have it today.
Yeah, and it happened.
Yeah, sure did. So.
We don't wish you your luck.
I'm going to say that.
And just to explain that in case any other people do, and they will, is we used to pay our DMV taxes in reivers. Now we're paying on hand. So that's one reason. And if you got, I got caught by a crossfire, the conversion.
I like the story of she has to collect from her.
It started July one, yes, July one.
I don't want to drive us out of any more of these, but what it meant was that, was that part of that could help us get through this short fall?
Short fall, yes. Because we were able to pick up sixteen months of revenue. That's what helped us instead of just twelve, and that's a one-time deal.
Right.
So we won't have that lucky thing. That was one of those things that really helped us work through that short fall.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're just kind of putting off the inevitable. Page five is our revenues for the month of July expenditures. We received the nine hundred and eighty-two thousand and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents in revenues. That's cash receipts, okay? And of course, I will be improving some receivables to that, which is going to be our sales tax for one month and then settle other of them. And expenditures were one million one fifty and fifty-eight dollars for a, a short fall of a hundred and sixty-seven, nine sixty-nine for the month of June. That's a whole lot less than the short fall last change just because I'm going to hand and try to pull as many of the expenditures that need to be made paid in May and May so we can see a true picture for June. You'll flip to page six, our year-to-date surplus in the general fund so far is nine hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, better than I expected. I was praying and hoping for about four hundred thousand. So I'm happy to report that after I make what adjustments I can make, I'm thinking it's going to round out to be about seven hundred and fifty thousand once we pick up all the bills and the approvals. And if you want to flip to page seven, we received, we got a nice shot in our sales tax. This money just hanging today. This is the July distribution, which is basically picking up May, what was collected in May in the state, hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars. And I believe that was the highest amount we have received all year for one month. We rounded out the year with a positive variance between this year and last year of ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars. That was very much needed, and I'm so excited that I was able to report that. Just to give you an idea of where we will be standing in fund balance, because that's always a big deal when we're talking about budget and where are we with local government commission. And these are just numbers I've scribbled down for myself. I've estimated fund balance at the end of June, once we finish the audit, be around between four point one and four point two million, which if those numbers hold, we will have met our twenty-eight percent fund balance requirement with the local government commission. And I'm really so excited if that's happening. That'll be the first year since I've been here we've been able to do that. Just a couple of other FYI pieces of information. We got the Medicaid, BNS Medicaid cost settlement last week. That was seventy-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. See, I'll put the notice in your package and I'm thinking of it. I was expecting about forty thousand, so I was pleased that we were able to get more. I don't anticipate seeing that again if the budget goes through the way I'm thinking it, Bill. So we better be thankful we got them. And just a bit of bad news, there's a couple of things going on in the General Assembly that finance people are a lot happy about. I think I reported the last meeting when we did the budget meeting, that as soon as the budget goes through, Grand County could stand away about two hundred and twenty thousand more revenues from the state. So we really need to be talking to our legislators and not getting up on that. And then there was also another bill that was passed or put into the floor of the House, I guess, last week. And basically, it's related to this DMV switchover where they enter a current plan. The DMV offices would receive, they receive like, I'm thinking about fifty cents per transaction. This is the House bill that's going through with adding another forty-eight cents to that, which could cost the counties more than five million dollars. So once again, we need to be really speaking with our legislators and telling them. One thing that when we were going through all of the education, there was a lot of work done to try to figure out what it would cost the agencies to process those transactions. And the Department of Revenue had really, really worked hard to make that a feasible amount where they would not be losing a lot of money, but it would be workable for both the DMV agencies and the county governments. And so this will really, this could really adversely affect just Grand County, whatever county in the state as far as their budgeting.
Well, one of the things I noticed is that they're going to go and put these things online, and that's going to be one of the big shots they are. I don't understand all that's going on and what they want to do, just, and, you know, trying to figure out how they can justify that.
Yeah.
Because it's just beyond me. And you ask the people that represent us about it, and it's kind of like, you don't know, I mean, what you do.
There's a, that bill was actually had a chance to be heard last week in committee, and it was not heard. I've been in contact with Representative West. And I haven't heard back as of yet, you know, with our concerns over this bill. There is a lot of political theater going on back and forth at the General Assembly. But it's, it's hard to tell what's going to actually shake out. As we all know, they, we don't have a budget. As I've been standing on Carolina, operating out of the town of Westwood. It's, it's something that we're keeping our, our ear to the pavement on every Sunday day to stay in touch with.
Well, Mr. Garland, that brings up another question. Now, I'm looking that up, continuing resolution issue. Having been in the public school system, I know it's been as long as up to October before the tax thing. How's it going to impact us on revenue between if it should go to October? I don't, you know, we've always operated on the worst basis in our country.
Right. Theoretically, when you're under continuing resolution, they basically take the last year's budget, divide it by twelve, and continue to fund just like we're still on the last year's budget. So the only problem is, is if they do any retroactive adjustments, if our revenue streams are continuing like they've been, and then all of a sudden they pull back, then we're liable to see some somewhat of a cliff, you know, like especially in that area of the SAs and whatever.
And are you looking for a reversion?
Well, what they would do is if they reverted, they would just cut our funding, you know, instead of us having to pay it back, they would just cut our funding to make up that short, their short fall, which would create a cliff for us. So, yeah, however long it goes, then that next month or two, we would be really, you know, in a, in a bad place. So, you know, we got, that's why we got to just continually be as frugal as we can be and pretend like the revenue's not there. We, tax bills did go out, I think, July one, and we are already beginning to see lots of cards and letters in the mail. So, you know, where do we try to use our tax money for the end of the year? You know, I'm hoping we can continue to do that. Because that's, that's, to me, that's my last resort is I try to operate off the state federal revenues first and use all of that.
Well, here comes the seven hundred and five year old. The issue with Bill, hear it anymore?
I had a conversation with Jack Gordon, the Lake County County Manager last week, and the Department of Management of Budget, North Carolina, looked into a possible error on their part. I'm waiting to hear back, Mr. Gordon, to see what progress has played and been made on these matters. I contacted him, but he was notified me to receive positive news, and that was.
So they continue to see how many is, is that, will still be short in that area?
We are operating as though.
It's not there.
It's not there. And if it comes back, then it's just good news.
And that's thirteen, fourteen, the fourteen, fifteen?
We're operating as if we lost it. And anything that might have been, that is great. It's one of those quick, that new finance officer is up, he is live, he is running. So far, nobody's pulling it in yet, especially the finance people. We're very pleased with it. We're, I can't say I'm a hundred percent pleased with it, but I'm never satisfied with anything. But we're, I think probably our next four minutes, we'll begin to see the first reports coming now, but I've been testing it. I never trust anything, so any time I do a transaction, it goes through an audit, it goes through, and I'm thinking that we're doing okay, it's picking up all the encumbrances. And so we're, we're up and running. And like I said, I'm a hundred percent happy. Oh, no, I'm a hundred percent happy, man, I'm handling.
And you said that board members could possibly qualify beyond the.
Yeah. Well, that's my kind of my next step, I got to get with our folks to where, to get you guys where you're moving from home to their home too, so.
Okay. All right, great.
And that's all I have.
All right. Y'all have any questions on this? Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. We'll move along. This time, I would recognize Mr. Jerry Dorr.
That's me.
Good, welcome.
Hi. Well, basically, I'm just here to kind of get some more answers and find out what is going to be done in regards to strays here in the county. And when I call the Sheriff's Department, your office, the wildlife, there doesn't seem to be an answer on it. Nobody seems to know. And there doesn't seem to be any type of county policy. And other than to say, unless they're a menace, you just have to kind of deal with it. And right now, I've dealt with eighteen dogs. Logan's Run is helping me with some of them. I don't know if it's my location, but because I'm above the dam and where the campgrounds are, people apparently like dropping puppies and other dogs off there.
Which dam you're talking about now?
Uh, here in San Diego.
Second?
And all the dogs seem to show up on my property. So unless it is a danger, you're just supposed to deal with it. Now, when they first started coming up and I called, they said, oh, you can take them down in Cherokee County. We don't have any facilities here, but you can take them down there. So that's what I did. But now, I don't have anywhere to take them. And when one came up and had a litter of my puppies and I got up to actually having in my yard eighteen dogs, that was quite a lot. Now, I was able to find homes so far for six of, of some of the strays that have shown up. Logan's Run is currently helping me with another, they helped me with eight, which is a nonprofit. But I would like to know what the county, I mean, even if they could say, if you have a stray, someplace that we can, something that we can do, some kind of an answer.
What would you recommend?
I would suggest that maybe just on a case-by-case basis, that the county, you know, if you've got strays that are coming up, because I know this doesn't affect everybody. Unfortunately, what I'm seeing is like going down near the woods is there are more and more strays. And there's going to end up being a feral dog, wild packs in the woods, which is going to affect tourism eventually because you'll have campers and other people. I've already had campers come to my house and say, it's the stray dog. This dog keeps coming to my campsite. And rather than us have, you know, we want to encourage the tourism and bring more people in. We don't want them hitting stray animals crossing the road. We don't want people at our campsites being accosted by all these wild dogs that are looking for food. So before that gets to be a concern, I would like, you know, have something set up where even if on an individual basis and you can get reimbursed, to set up something with the Cherokee County now, or another county that's close, to take the animals to their shelters. If that's something that's feasible to where whatever fee they say, a nominal fee, and then it would put it on the homeowner to come back to the county and say, may I be reimbursed for taking the animal down to the shelter? Not even asking for the gas, just something. Because right now, you can't take them anywhere. I've, I've tried all the way over to Asheville, I've called everyone. When I had called crisis city, they said, oh, sorry, didn't work well. And that's when I was up to eighteen. And I was like, this is kind of a bit ridiculous.
Well, you know, the options, you know, you're talking about is, is, you know, as much as I've heard about this, we do not have a nonprofit in our county that will handle that, right? We don't do it.
There's not.
No, there's not. And then the next step is, is that if the taxpayers would be funding it, that's where we run into another problem. But I do hear you about having to have some venue, about someplace where these stray animals can go. And this is a national problem, I'm not trying to transfer this to something else. But I did read an article not long ago, and I don't want to offend anybody, but it says if you feed it, you own it. I mean, that's basically what the article said, and they're having to deal with that in municipalities and such as that. We have gone and tried to do the investment camp with animals that are, that are dangerous, danger animals. There's a possible, there's a, there's a, there's a process in place for that. But, you know, as to having, being able to say, because it's happening everywhere in North Carolina, there are less and less dollars to operate, you know, even the nonprofits. And it's not that I'm not, I'm not hearing you on that, but it comes down to the dollars and cents, and how, how do you go about doing it? And then you say there's personnel that have to be involved. There has to be a place, you know, if the county takes custody of the animal, then we have to take care of them.
I'm not even saying.
Okay.
Take custody.
Right.
If you can just make an arrangement with Cherokee County that they will accept dogs from Grandpa or stray.
We've had that. We have that for years.
Yeah, that's, when I first moved here, I was able to do that.
The last two, three times that we had that with them, they wouldn't deal with us, and they didn't want, they wouldn't come when we needed them. For instance, the child, the guy that he had for the bulldogs, we called them, they said, no, we don't work them Saturday and Sunday, or something like that. We had to call Cherokee. We've got a contract with Cherokee Board, dangerous dogs, right?
I know you did.
And they backed them down. And when, and it was twelve, fifteen thousand dollars a year that we paid them, and they didn't do their job.
Well, there's, can I request that you check with some of the other counties so that there's at least some policy where if somebody calls, they can say, we don't have anything in place here, but you can take them to this county even for a fee?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, you know.
We can investigate it.
Yeah, I mean, check them. Well, I, I've had two miniature Chihuahuas poisoned in the last two weeks, and it probably inside my house because they didn't get nowhere, just a little ways. One of them laid it back to the house.
I'm sorry to hear that.
So if you want to get rid of it, just bring it up on 4D on somebody, they'll take here. If they poisoned two of my little dogs, that if they miss you, they might bite your toe there, just a little.
I'm sorry to hear that.
So, I mean, you know, I know what you're talking about. I seen two people have two with them the other day, and they were ten dollars, they were walking off. And they had found them out there. They was going to take the dinosaur with them. I told them they worked over the sheriff's office, and tell them, you know, that they took them with them. And so people was looking, wanting to find them. I know it's a problem, and, but when you get, when you pay them twelve thousand dollars a year and they'll get anything for it, they got one stone win, see, and pick that over here. And if that's not feasible.
Well, then perhaps some of the other counties make an arrangement that, you know, even on a case-by-case basis, something like that.
I see the same shape, the high country place with the farmer. And if they use more hunting with the farmer, that's a, here. And if they get, that's a big thing. If they don't like them, they just take color off their luggage. And where a lot of them come from. And where a lot of them come from, it's, it's a problem.
And, and Ms. Russo, I mean, she's found an engine on the side of the road throwing dumpsters.
Yeah, but, but we've got people where our dogs and the dumpster are blocked and.
Yeah, and I understand, and I understand that.
People that have rabbits in their hutches that are destroyed by wild dogs too. So, that gets into somebody, you know, that are coming up on some personal property and destroying things to get to the cage animals for me.
Where do you live?
I live north of, um, the Seneca, like, above San Diego Dam. So, all the, it just seems like all the strays, either somebody sets, I mean, they set the little puppies, they hole in the top of my driveway and I, there's, I mean, puppies that don't, even crawl far. Or there are strays coming up out of the woods because they've gone down by Joyce County or by the bridge there. I guess because there's water and they just drop the dogs off. And then they hear my dogs and come up through the woods. So that's how most of them, they just, it was the one that had the litter of my puppies that really, you know.
You like them, not, not, or do you think?
I didn't even know that thought was programmed, I had made arrangements to give it away. And the day we would take it and give it away, I guess it was all the excitement and winning the flavor. And, uh. So I couldn't obviously give away them. So I just appreciate you looking into this and coming up with some kind of remedy other than, and, and even when I've talked to people about it, it's like everybody, there isn't something here. And I think some of the, even, you know, the law enforcement, the other people, they don't have an answer either. And nobody likes to not have an answer for something. So something could be set up in place, you know, even if it's taking it up in, like, Swain County, another county over, where you've got someplace where, you know, somebody drops puppies off, you're not, you know, you could take them somewhere. Because nobody wants, just, you know, I've had somebody say, well, just go shoot them, but.
It's hard to do.
Shoot up the.
Yeah. Okay, well, I really appreciate you bringing, bringing it to us. And we'll, we'll, we'll investigate and find out what we can possibly do. I've got a, I've got a Saint Benard and a Baxton. I'll hang around my place. I mean, I understand, I really do. And, you know, owners, I won't go and say anymore about giving seven dogs a house like that.
Had a lot of them show up, we can have them. Be back to ten again after so struggling to get out, being, you know. You have an inside dog in that, it's like a couple of months, I love it. This is, um, I'm, I'm very thankful for Logan's Run working with me.
Great.
And I'll explain the situation, we're on it. But, um, like I said, I've had people stop up at my house and they can't round the same, because this is your dog. Because they're having dogs come to their campsites. So it's affecting the tourists that are coming here. That, you know, one couple was from Massachusetts, another was from, um, Connecticut. Another one was from, up the other one. And it, it's kind of upsetting to me that they're coming, is this your dog? And it's like, I've got all these dogs already, now can you take it? No, I can't take it, I'm sorry, the wildlife people here don't take it. They don't know what to do with it, but it's hanging around our campgrounds. So if you want to wear it with that.
But far as, you know, the ground, well.
All right, that's a little class too.
You know, we can tell the Cherokee, they got, they might take their, brush and say, here's a body. Can't manage to keep in contact with, and say, what is your work, because I know we need to, we need to do something.
Like I said, even if it was on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, e- even if the person, you know, you can say the procedure is you go down, you come back to the city to get reimbursed, because not everybody's gonna do that. They're just gonna go down, pay the fee and be done with it. Just something that was in place.
If we can get them to cut once a month, but before they go.
Then we still got the issue of, you know, have to take them, keep them in the animals. If it's once a month.
And this family, like I said, you don't want their wild packs throwing down their campground throughout here that, they're all, you know, crossing the road on the bikes and. That's it. Thank you much.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Dorr, appreciate it. Alright, at this time, I'd like to recognize Lishon Farm, please, for approval of fees, and automated doors, and electronic records. Is that, did I get that right? Welcome.
What do you want to do first?
It's up to you.
Alright, I'll leave fees first, we should have a little package. A long list of fees, a little black list. With a little letter associated with it on the right, to your right, hi. It's got the letter headed around county, you know, Department of Public Health.
Department.
Have to go. I feel sorry for you. Love your doctor hair. There you go.
Thank the village.
Okay. So on, basically what I try to do every year, just for legality purposes, is try to present any fees that we have through the Health Department, through the Board of Health, and then of course, to the Commissioners for approval. Um, but you know, last year, we had multiple changes based on Medicaid cost settlement recommendation. And we, of course, implemented those last year, and they did not seem to have, you know, any indication on, to a negative standpoint. Um, one of the, the administration, immunization administration fees, because we are gonna have to go up and start doing private vaccines now that they've changed, you know, not doing so many vaccines to people with insurance and other things to the state, we are gonna, we are requesting that we lower the administration fee back down, keep hurting the public on that. It will probably lower Medicaid cost settlement by a small amount, but considering what the services would be, we'd make the recommendation that we do lower that back down.
Could you share a word in terms of immunizations for kids? You gave us a ballpark a bit more time, remember that?
Yes, sir, we did. Um, we just priced this past week, some of the purchased vaccines. And some of them, just for us to buy, was like a hundred and eighty-nine dollars per, per, yes, per one. Um, some of them was a hundred and forty, you know, like, some of them was, you know, forty. And like some went down, it was that low. Um, which is a shame when you've got somebody that, that doesn't qualify for the state supply and has to actually do this. But then, you know, the, the disimmunizations, of course, you've also got to add on a fee to that for administration. And when you do that, you're looking at some immunization fee, you know, two hundred dollars. So that's why I'd like to see us lower the immunization, uh, uh, administration fee back down. But from what Medicaid cost analysis recommended, two twenty-three dollars. I still think that we will be fine with that, it's not really hurt us that much. It will be a small indication on our Medicaid cost settlement, I don't think it'll be enough that will really show the difference. So that is one of the requested things. Um, because of the administration fee being twenty-three dollars, flu shots this year, um, will probably have to be thirty-five dollars for our recommendations being. The price immunizations for that, for what we're paying plus the administration fee, which would be included in that thirty-five dollars. Is what we have followed around and asked some of the other county health departments, and they pretty much told us the same thing, and they're gonna have to go with basically that same rate. Probably, we probably did twenty-five private pay, actually comes through twenty-five, thirty, maybe, it comes through the Health Department and actually has to pay for a year. So it's not a big claim, most of the time, insurance for Medicare, Medicaid pays for everybody that comes to the Health Department part of that. So it's not gonna be a two major on that. So those are two of the biggest things. Dental, pretty much is, is stating based on what we set last year. Um, environmental health, I am based on the Board of Health's recommendation, presenting to, um, change three fees on that. One of being expansion, and if you get to the back, is last year's, this year's, and then other counties comparisons. For our own health fees. One of the recommendations the Board of Health has asked for me to bring to you is expansion of existing wastewater systems, to change that to a hundred and fifty dollars, back up to the two hundred and fifty dollars that we did charge. Um, we changed that probably about three, four, four years ago, I guess, um, down to the hundred and fifty. But, you know, basically, when we have to do an expansion of a wastewater system, it includes every step that we have to do when somebody comes in and applies for a new system. So that's why we, you know, it basically costs us that to be able to do it. Another recommendation is the new well permit fees, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, back up to the three hundred dollars that we used to charge. And then another one is to add well permit renewals to the fee schedule. That's something that we've always charged, when people have to come in and they let the permit fees go dead. We've always charged that amount, it's just never been on our schedule. So that's not a dollar or increase or anything like that, it's just we actually put it on the schedule where, you know, where we have it listed. So that is basically the only changes, two, two changes of increases and one change of an addition on the fee schedule that we've already been charging. Any questions on fee schedule?
Those numbers that you gave were, because I, I have a well drill in another county, I have to work through.
Yes, sir.
So that's the, that's the minimum? Or is that, is there some kind of baseline on it? Because I had to pay quite a bit for mine.
Yes, sir.
At the well. Just permanent?
The last page kind of gives you a comparison. What the county's charged for that. Such as the expansion of onsite system in Cherokee County is six hundred dollars.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it kind of, kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Well, fees is, um, New Wells, three hundred, Cherokee, three twenty-five on the claim, and of course, you can read as it goes on out there. Three seventy-five in Macon. And the reason for that is, is we have to pay so much, it costs us nearly a hundred dollars out of pocket through the Health Department to pay for the sampling that's required for any water. So that's, that's one of the prices likely are of that, and we have to pay that to the state for that sampling. So that is the permit or well, or actually all fees of the Health Department that is, um, has been approved by the Board of Health, and is bringing the payment to the Board of Commissioners based on that recommendation.
We have that as an action.
You can do action now.
Okay, it'll be a pleasure if the Board go ahead and do the action on this right now. Have you ever given that? Okay, alright, with that, it's been presented by, uh, Ms. Farm. I have a motion to go ahead and accept these changes. Have a motion. Have a second?
Say.
Okay, any questions, Congress? Okay, all approved? All opposed? In here? Good, good. Alright, thank you, we act up.
Okay. Um, the next thing that, uh, that he has requested that I present to you, I've kind of come in at the last minute, slotted the door and back out here before we come down to this meeting. Um, when we were looking at prices for electronic health records, of course, we looked at the medical and the dental on the requirements. One of the things that we have, we use Patterson Dental at this time, of course, we've priced several others. But Patterson Dental has given us a estimate here for electronic health records that we have until July twenty-eighth, the final, I think we want to do it. It's five thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents, and I'd have if anybody else additional policies. You're welcome. Sorry. I said it was last minute, it's July approved. We put this in the budget, we've already proved it. It's, it's not that it's new. Um, it is probably moving a little quicker on dental than we were expecting it to. That's the only change, I guess, that, that we're really looking at. Uh, I put it, we did put it in capital outlay in the budget. So, uh, I'm not really sure if we have to, I guess, questions, is that what we have to do? So if there's questions on this, maybe I'll, I don't know if we have to do an additional approval.
I know that being with, when you're in our budget, budget talks or our meetings and everything, you mentioned this, didn't you?
Yes, sir, it's in, it's in the capital outlay.
And, and, yeah, and it was something, medical, not just dental.
Well, I put it in both.
But, that's what I thought, so that's, that's already included with this.
Right, there's sixty-eight hundred dollars budget in the capital outlay for the dental, uh, planning. Uh, as Alicia was thinking, she was really thinking it would be closer toward the end of fiscal year. But if she doesn't want to move on it, they'll double the price. Yeah, if you look at the prices there, if, if we wait past the twenty-eighth, they call us today and tell us this, that's five thousand, fourteen dollars, two thousand, four thousand, eighteen hundred will be charged. So they will only give us this to the July twenty-eighth. So I guess they kind of put us under a front of thinking whether or not. The cost of the amount is about, uh, mine and Mr. Fable's.
Okay.
Approval limit, I told Alicia, we need to get that, it's getting to approve.
Okay, but the mom ran it, it is, but, I mean, it's how it is.
Yeah, you'll need extra room if she has to, uh, put any kind of additional laptops or whatever on line. She's still looking at that, need extra room for that, with that experience in her arms. Um, and we will no longer have to use the Eagle Hills, not Eagle Hills, I'm sorry.
Eagle Soft?
No, Eagle Soft is what we're looking at, Easy Dental.
Easy Dental.
The program that we've used in the past, that does not have the capability of electronic cell records. So. That would be a twelve hundred dollar a year savings, thanks, sir.
That is more efficient too.
Well, it's, it's gonna have more, you know, it'll have a clinical side of electronic health records in mind in that option in the past. And I think efficiency will, will increase, you can just think that the, the operator will have communication with time, have a schedule of availability and efficiency in that area.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, is there any person, Congress, have questions, Ms. Farm? I think it's gonna do, I mean, double it? See this, it doubles?
Sounds like it.
It does, it looks like it.
When I sent that to you today.
Well, it more than doubles, doesn't it? Two, four, six. Yeah, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all approved, six, five, four, three, two, all opposed.
Look, the last thing, and I probably will not have all the information, I think maybe Greg or David has more information. The reason why I'm bringing this up at this time, um, is a concern I have over the night that we took over our cap program, and, well, just more people was coming in for services at the Health Department. Last week, or week before, whenever it was when, when this happened, you know, we had, we had someone that was not able, that was using a walker, who was not able to get in our front doors. We had to actually get somebody to go out and help them in because of the way the doors. And then again today, we had a client that we would, literally had to walk to her car, and she was not able to open the doors. Um, we're getting, you know, we're seeing more and more of that. You know, we sent, I think, five people to the registry room at the Health Department today. And that's the kind of clientele that we're starting to see. And, uh, so that's, that's why I made the request, I know Greg had asked, it had been put in my budget, and I, I will say no. Um, the assumption is that when a building was built, it did not require these. But I am concerned now with the clientele and the, and the people that is coming up with our building, that it is a safety issue.
He's got one.
Uh, thanks, Alicia. Uh, I spoke with David Hileb earlier today, uh, he's the one that just got, he, he got just a basic initial quote, just so we can kind of get a general idea of what we're looking at. Uh, there's four doors at the Health Department that require these, in total, we run seven thousand dollars. Um, the building itself, uh, as it is today, is within eighty-eight compliance. Um, but, you know, obviously, there, there can be cause for concern, but the building itself as of now is not out of compliance with any sort of eighty-eight guidelines. Naturally, seven thousand dollars is, is a budget concern. And, uh, we would, I was asked to bring this to the Board's attention.
Can you not, uh, get one over those wheelchair exit, that you can get in with a wheelchair for the button? Instead of putting it on forward, because it's, it's pretty out here, but they stay open. So I don't know if the wind is blowing this cold, who can keep his wheel to heat?
But it, it, I think that's what the price is about, right?
Yeah, the problem is, she has air conditioning, she has two sets of doors.
Right.
She goes in one, and she's gonna have to go.
So what, I mean, it wouldn't be that.
Or way to forward and.
No, it'd be that if you want to use it, you can, if you don't, you can not.
Well, what Alicia wants is a push button like we have back here.
Yes.
The electronic door that opens with a push button.
Or you can walk over to pull it open.
Or you walk in. They don't want you to have any one.
No, it, it won't be automatic when you step. No, it, it won't be automatic when you step through it or anything, it means you bash a button, you need assistance.
Okay, and that'll be for both sets of doors, every button, set of buttons?
For dental and the health department side, yes. Yes, if there is a particular, you know, on both sides.
There's two entrances in, not just four in the front.
Right, you've got the front door, and then the foyer, and then another set of doors on both sides.
Well, you don't pay that much change, you don't have to.
Well, yeah.
And I'll have to do it a lot of few months, and it's not, uh, try to give you any one and make a happy up of that.
And we've, we've seen that, you know, more and more in the last month, the people that need that assistance. Most of the time so far, somebody's been watching and been able to pump up and run out there, but what if they got it that far and got hung in it or something, you know, that's a concern I have with the state.
I'm making a motion for safety.
I, I need to seek a couple more, um, I'd like to get a couple more beds, if that would be okay with you.
I make a motion that you get a couple more beds in the high floors bed.
We don't need to work, use the word did.
Propose.
Proposal, yeah. Yeah, I hate to be nitpicky, but it would be fair on that. So propose, proposal, so it's seven thousand for both entrances, or that, the entrances there in front?
No, we didn't put the break on, there, there's seven thousand, I think, there is, and then you have the push buttons, or said, or because they have a more amount, amount of payments.
Right.
Inside the door.
You've got safety sensors, you've got, uh, wall switch posts, and basic cost of the, that's what I'm saying. You know, if you look at this quote right here, if you're looking at a minimum of seven thousand dollars, I need to get some additional quotes to make sure we've got everything lined up. This was just a, uh, an idea for a safety. You know, the health department presented, I want to bring the board's attention to see how you would like to proceed, and if it is a formal motion to go out and seek additional posts and to accept the lowest warrant, I will go to our board.
Do we have a motion on the floor that, uh, our county manager would go and get the best prices of the care system? Appreciate you all bringing it up, because it is an issue. As far as I see, those doors have been there a long time, and I don't have a lot of folks in. And I've learned more and more from our director there too, and so, you know, more and more folks using them, certainly, uh, because of the issue of medical needs and to be able to, so. And Becky, I guess we're going to lean on you, Becky. You know, it's always an issue. Always a key. But I motion. So we're hoping to do that, but a commitment, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions for our other folks? Not all approved? All opposed? Thanks for your attention, Alicia. That was great. Okay, this time we're going to recognize Mr. Cable of the revision approval of the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen HCC BG grant and approval of the HCC BG fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen. That's not going to be for the sign.
No, the, the name, that's our office that proposed.
Yes, sir, this, I don't know, and I should be real brief, um, the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen HCC BG grant, uh, we actually did see a slight reduction in funds there, and we are asking for board commissioner approval to seek, uh, HCC BG fiscal year two thousand fourteen, thirteen and fourteen.
Okay, that's something important to do. All right, folks, we have a motion, and we go ahead and approve these. Have a motion?
Okay.
We have a second, any further questions or comment? I'm glad that Greg's qualified. All right, all approved, six, five, four, ten, please, all opposed, like sign. This time we'll recognize Jill Steele, USDA housing preservation grant. We had our public hearing on the eleventh, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, um, the first thing we're going to talk about is the USDA housing preservation grant, um, I just need the board to approve, um, that we can apply for this money. I have been working with USDA for a number of years with housing preservation grants. This is the largest amount that I've ever seen available. It's an estimated, uh, amount, but still, it, it'll be in that ballpark, so, um, that's, that's exciting, because, um, in the past, I think the most I've dealt with is nine thousand dollars. Last year it was big, so to have, um, a possibility of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents is, that's real significant.
That's secured to what, eight houses?
Yes, we have to do eight houses.
Eight houses.
And, you know, we're, with our scattered site housing money, this can work together, and if, um, the applicants apply for USDA that have applied for scattered site housing, we can make this budget work out to where we can get the maximum out of both. But they've not been resold yet, I need to say that, but, but we just need to apply for this money and, and see if we can get it to Grand County.
And we did have public comment about that, it was very close here, we're getting informed about that. All right, we'll go ahead and act on this, then, is that permissible?
Yeah, we need a motion to allow her to see the application.
Okay, we have a motion now to, to go over and go in pursuit of this, great. Have a motion. We have a second, any discussion or comment? All approved, six, five, four, ten, all opposed, like sign. Hope you pray to get it.
I do. And the next thing is our funding conditions for our scattered site housing, um, grant that we have received. The first, I'm, I'm just going to, I've got a stack of them here, I'm just going to go through the way they're laying on the stack. We've got the update on the new plan, recipients plan for the fair housing over in county, and these will all be, all of these plans will lead to the new policies that CCG is requiring us. We may have some in place, but they may actually not be up to date according to the changes that they have made, so we, we will have up to date, um, plans and policies for this new grant. Okay, the, the fair housing policy, uh, we do have a two thousand twelve scattered site housing grant project ordinance, uh, rehabilitation is one hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars, emergency repair five thousand, administration is twenty-two thousand five hundred, for a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have a new section three plan for local economic benefit for low and very low income persons. Uh, citizen participation plan for the new grant. We have the, um, performance based contract. Uh, the administration, uh, contract, which has already been approved, is just a funding condition that we have to address. And, um, an equal employment and procurement plan.
I have one question, what was the ordinance that you jumped to? The ordinance?
Well, that is, uh, every, every time you have a grant, you have to have a, a, a grant project ordinance, and that just breaks down the activities that's in that grant. As of the, we want to do rehabilitation, which means reconstruction, clearance, or rehab, it's all under one, uh, lineup now, and you've got emergency repair and administration.
We have received, this is, just to get on with it, right?
This is to get our funding conditions released, and, um, and then we have to get, um, that letter from the state saying you are free to go and get your.
All right, great. All right, we have a motion that, uh, we go ahead and accept this as presented, for the ordinance is real efficient, and all of these in the amount of project fund, two hundred and five thousand dollars. Have a motion, we have a second, any further questions or comments? Ms. Steele? They all approved, six, five, four, ten, all opposed, like sign.
I think we've also got a section five or four.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's, it's listed, but, but it's like, it's the funding conditions.
I see, work for Chris, work for you, good environment, you, it's really good then, so, all right, great. Anything else? No more signatures tonight?
No more signatures tonight, but can I say something about signatures? It's coming along really nice. We have had a, a problem or two, um, which is, is pretty, I mean, you can kind of expect it, meaning site and so forth, but it, it flows, it's coming along nicely, and I really, I was really pleased with, with the site today, and, and I think Grand County is very fortunate to have had this opportunity to get this money, to be as non-existent as it is. Last year it was five hundred thousand, and they funded, I think, twelve projects out of sixty-some that was, that was applied for, and that's just, that's just about enough. And the only ones that were funded was those that had matched money foot with us. So to have this opportunity, six hundred thousand dollars, not five hundred, but six hundred, not match money, that's good. And I, I think we can take a few problems, I, I, I will, problems, because I think we've got something that we're working with and working for.
Absolutely. Well, really appreciate it, and, uh, love in the way. All right, anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, this time we'll recognize our one and only Juanita Culver. This woman several years ago told me she loved her in her heart, I hope she stays. Welcome, Juanita.
Hi. All right. I've got two change orders, change order five and change order six for the facility with the supplemental monies. Those monies totaled, the first change ordered totaled twenty-two thousand nine sixty-four eighty-seven, that was for the thousand gallon tank generator, three upgraded water heaters, twenty kilowatt generator installed, heating pump, furnace, twelve circuits of lights, outlets, five quarters, weighing four, evaporating, plus the bond, blah, blah, blah. That one was twenty-two thousand nine sixty-four. Change order six, which is the life and vital change order that we will be doing now. Change order six is going to take the monies to seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, even though the seven forty-five, I think, I don't envision fifteen thousand there. This is money saved in taxes, the fourteen thousand some odd dollars today in taxes. I've reimbursed six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of the monies, I sue about sixty-some thousand with reimbursed. And when you look at this change order, this change order is for the safety mirrors on the fence, for the free drips, for the, the breakouts, this and that. The SIS term concealment, five additional light pole protectors for the frontal lot, those five, picnic table, free trash cans, fifty total of going with that wing on the right-hand side, same as a big bar, it's a big, uh, cement table. And then it's twelve curb stops, and that's for the area that employees park in next to the fence, and on the other side for the public. We already have up against the dealer on both sides, the two of them, one's towards the barn and one on the other side, to keep anybody from rolling into that. It's to purchase a, uh, there's also going to be traffic control arrows showing the entrance to exit. It's also for the washing vacuum system for, uh, transit, uh, the circuits for that. This, number six is for twenty-five thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and three cents. You will see at the bottom that we have a new sentence highlighted on, on this document when I give it to you. Got five copies, got a sign, I got to have a five back, not make on to the button. Have it, and I hope everybody can still hear the button. You will see project funding through FKA R funding, project funding by Grand County contribution, that fourteen thousand some odd dollars is in this. I doubt the rest of the sales tax here for this amount is fine, because I still not reimbursed, see five thousand because I'm not. More than likely, we're going to come up almost even. We could by chance go over a few dollars, and it could by chance, if no taxes anymore, go up to a thousand dollars, I don't know that. But it didn't want to weigh twenty thousand dollars on the table, twenty-five thousand I don't know, I tried to get every bid that I could get, I got none. This is five and six for five copies, you can see the deal, okay? I hope you sign it, look when you got it, will you?
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay, with that presentation, I, I now want to commend Juanita for what she's done up there. And I want to say to everybody, I, I went up, I was hoping she was going to be there today, but I took the nickel tour. If you haven't been up to that facility yet, I'm sure somebody would gladly take you around and look at it. It's something that's going to be there for a good while, and providing services really needed when our community is served, so. With that, I'd like to ask the board to consider taking motion anyway, if, if no more change orders happen.
They should, in the last two, we've got a making in the morning, the second to have everything with later, about July thirty-first, which is virtually a possible time of order, it has to be made in America. But I hope to send the last three versions in to the thirty-first, and that's the reason I'm trying to get both change orders in tonight.
Okay.
Till it's signed and architec and the G C can sign number six tomorrow, they've already signed five, you're the owner of mine, you're on five, but they've all got to be signed in the morning, try to get that out to state and move it as quickly and swiftly as we can.
Okay, all right, with that, do we have a motion, do we go ahead and approve, uh, with the change orders number five and number six as presented? We have a motion, we have a second? We have a second, any question or comment, first call. All approved, six, five, four, ten, all opposed, like sign. I'll tell you, you want to take these now?
Please.
Okay, for the board.
Yeah, but you're in, I like you, man, so we're going to need you to sign if you do if you want.
I want to make sure that all these places here are assigned.
I put a little tab on each one of them, I show the sign, and I like to review this way, that's my problem.
All right, with that, thank you, Juanita. This time, is there any public comment, please?
Yeah, I'm signed up.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
I didn't count any public comment until I saw somebody was here speak. You know what I'm going to do? I, I'm just going to ask you some more about this animal control, because, you know, where I stand on this, but, um, you know, a while back I spoke with county manager, Kate Hall, about this, and one of the things he had asked me to do, you know, is get some numbers, and one thing I found out, it's very difficult to get accurate numbers as to how many strays, you know, are kept up in this area. I mean, when you've got many various different places, you can take them, and then there's a lot of residents who just take them and, and doff them, so, and then there's turrets, you know, that, that take some home and stuff with them. So finding accurate count is extremely difficult. Um, I have spoken to some of the organizations, and I did get some statistics from Paul's, which is in Grayson City, and, um, just through, from January through June twenty-first, they had sixty-three requests from Grand County for strays, you know, that's, that's a pretty good.
This January to now?
Yes, January to, January first to June twenty-first of this year, they had sixty-three requests. Um, you know, I guess, and you know, you know, I've talked to you guys about this before, I mean, I get animals and I get strays come up, and, and it's very difficult. Um, you know, we, we run the gamut of places to take them, uh, one time Wayne'sville actually took them, but they will no longer take them, either from Grand County, Buncombe County will not take them from Grand County, Macon will not take them from Grand County. I mean, residents are pretty much at a loss, and, you know, I hear what you're saying, you feed them, you know, they're yours, but, you know, when you've got other outdoor animals.
Not supporting somebody else.
You, you can't, well, this, you can't control that. You can't, you know, when I've got, I've got a dog and cats outside, so obviously there's food out there, well, you know, in the middle of the night when a stray comes and eats my food, I can't control that, you know? Um, and what happens is that residents are now placed in a position where they either have to do the unthinkable, as somebody had mentioned, which I'm sorry, but many of us, they're, we're just not capable of doing something as, like that, and, or breaking the law ourselves, because, you know, how am I supposed to do, I mean, I just recently had stray come up, and I was actually willing this time to go through Lopen's Run, and Lopen's Run asks that you foster them out until they find a home for it, and I was willing to do that until the dog started to look at my fourteen-year-old outdoor cat as much, and would not even consider looking otherwise than when I whooped her. You know, I mean, she still was into that, so, you know, I'm not going to say what I had to do with the dog, because, you know, I, I'm not going to, you know, but, you know, we're forced into two situations that we do not like to have to do, and, and possibly breaking the law, you know, and I don't, I know you understand the stray problem, you know, probably here, but I think in the long term, it's going to become so much worse because these strays, as, um, this board said, um, you know, they're out there in the woods, and they're not a meard, they're not spayed, so what do you think is going to happen? I mean, we're going to have continuous problems in. I mean, we're going to have continuous problems increases. And in fact, I think I spoke, oh, well, the lady actually, Paul's told me that ever since we've stopped the animal control here, that it has dramatically gone up, the amount of animals that they have taken from Grand County and the, and in fact, in fact, she even says it's gotten so much that they are keeping statistics on Grand County. So, I mean, this is, I think it's a long-term issue that is just only going to get worse. I, I, we all know what I witnessed a few months ago, you know, happened. And I don't blame the people that were in that incident. I believe that that police officer did not want to do what he had to do, you know, but again, you know, I just, I just feel that, I don't know what the answer is, you know?
Well, I was ready to ask.
I know, I, I don't know what the answer is. I do know we had a nonprofit here that, according to her, did not get a lot of help when she asked for help back, you know, a few years back with the county. You know, I don't know a lot of specifics about this, I don't want to say too much, but we did have a nonprofit and she was not able to continue due to lack volunteers and also health problems, so she couldn't do it, but, you know. I, I, I don't know, I think she had kind of a good idea, you know, if somebody may be getting reimbursed for, you know, I don't know if that's someone's idea, but that was something that may be going into, maybe another county, you know, a month, once a month, may not be a lot, but you know what, I'd be willing to pet up a dog for a few weeks if I knew that somebody was gonna come and get it. You know, I don't want to pet, now that dog, I'd keep petting up for long because I mean, it was just negligence to that dog, you know? It would've been negligent, I don't have the facilities, you know, I don't have a covered area like that, you know? But maybe some kind of a reimbursement program, you know, that was kind of an interesting idea.
Well, you see, Lisa, one of the things too, as I listened to the conversation tonight, is, is that a lot of the counties aren't willing to take the dogs.
No, not from us.
I mean, no.
Not without pay.
I just don't know, I, you know, I, I don't understand about keeping statistics, statistics on Grand County.
Um, I think because they just get so many requests that it's, it's gotten more and more that they're starting to, I'm not sure why, I, I don't know internally why they're doing that, but.
But you see, the, the thing that it boils down to is, you know, this is a, a county of, you know, around eight, two-hundred people and, you know, I'm not gonna pour mouth about it. You know, if you had a facility, you had way, or somebody that would be interested in doing that kind of thing, but you know, set in present circumstances, the steel rounds are important to people and I understand that. And there has to be a way to work that out. And the best that I can know is to look around and see what we can do.
Maybe, you know, there are some spay neuter reduction programs.
Right.
But again, I don't think it's necessarily our responsibility to be rounding all the strays up and taking them to the state. But maybe if you can at least, you know, I know a program, actually, I just read something on the internet, and I don't know what town or what state it was in, but they actually have a program where they round up the strays, they give them spayed and neutered and they let them out wherever they want. I mean, I know that's, that doesn't solve the whole problem, it does solve the big problem, is they, they can't, they can't reproduce anymore, you know? So that's, that's, I just thought that, that's an option, you know, is, is working with a, a program. I think I saw some flyers at the post office that Logan's Run will help you with slow-cost spaying. Unfortunately, our vet department will not just span any purpose, but I feel as bad, but that's all right.
There's an Andrew.
Andrews, Andrews will, yeah.
Twenty-dollar fee, you get a coupon, they have specific times that they can.
So, I mean, that might be a possibility of, you know, doing a, you know, I don't know, a couple times a year rounding up these strays, you know, I, I mean, again, I'm just shooting in the dark too. So, but I just, I just support. And, and I don't want you all to spend on it, I mean, you know, I, I understand very well what you guys are sitting on financially, but it, it's an issue and, and thankfully we don't have an issue of rabies, you know, in the county that, you know, you've got health issues, you've got property damage issues, you've got people, you know, possibly having wrecks. In fact, I think I was told about five years ago, there was a couple that swerved a dog and, and died. I don't, I didn't look that up, but somebody told me that. So, you know, there's a number of issues and I just, you know, you can be pushed aside. Oh, and I do have real current requests, if we could change the light bulbs in here or something, the light is horrible in here. I'm getting really bad in here. They look to be on.
Not to go off.
It's, um, someone went on there, I think. Thank you very much.
All right, Lisa, I appreciate your attention, board, you're really good. Okay, is there anyone else? Ms. Randy? Public comment?
No one on the list, but I think it's everyone has something to say.
Yes, sir.
I'm not on the list, but based on the few conversations I've heard, may I ask a very insensitive question?
Insensitive?
Insensitive, yes, sir.
Depends on how insensitive.
Well, it's politically incorrect and I'll probably get some gasps, but it's relevant to the issue.
So, microphone, please, and introduce yourself.
My name's Hubert Merchant, and I've listened to the comments and one party said something about doing the unthinkable and then I've also heard the expression, perhaps breaking the law. So my insensitive question is, what are the state or county laws against shooting stray animals under property? And I want to ask you to do it, I'm only asking because I just don't know.
Felony? Felony. It's a felony.
A felony?
It's a felony?
Stray dog?
What is it now?
You cannot just shoot an animal under property. If an animal, if an animal is attacking, bringing harm to your animals and something like that, then that would be an option, but you cannot just shoot animals because they're under property. We're charged, we're charged currently.
Well, it's a good thing that I asked the question, I'm a little superior.
All right, thank you, Ms. Merchant. All right, anyone else? Okay, this time then we'll go on through with our, our action items, there are a lot of things here, so we've got the, Ms. Clerk, again, please help me. I know that we've had some changes in the agenda that may be recorded here, so. Uh, we can go ahead and act on the agencies presented, please, okay?
All right, uh, run through this, down the list, before you have releases and discoveries. Total discoveries total one thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Releases total six thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. And that is there for the board's collection.
All right, we have a motion to accept the discoveries and releases presented, please. Have motion? Second, any discussion or comment? All approves if you can, all opposed, white sign, thank you very much.
Uh, next, at the last meeting, it was brought up for three appointments, two appointments to the Region A Advisory Council, uh, Major. Those three offerings that's being presented to the board tonight are Alicia Maron, Kimberly Tipton, and Kim Chris.
Have a motion? We have a second, any question or comment? Would you name those three, please?
It is Alicia Maron, Kimberly Tipton, and Kim Chris.
Okay, all approves if you can, five of them can, all opposed, white sign, thank you, sir.
Uh, next is the reappointment to the N H L Regional Library member, Ms. Diana Taylor Caskey.
If I may?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know this Ms. Caskey, but I was thinking more like Ms. Russo, uh, since she is a resident. I, I'm not sure if Ms. Caskey is a resident, I, I don't really.
Who is, who is this? Do you know Ms. Caskey?
Yes, Ms. Caskey used to be the president of the Friends of the Library for some years, is no longer. She's been on the regional board for many years. If you want a personal question, I'll say personal.
I'd just like to recommend that you, this, you live local and, and I, Ms. Russo, if she can live local, that's definitely.
She is local, but she has nothing else to do with, you know, the Friends of the Library and stuff. I, I do feel that they're not, not telling me at all, but I do feel there are better representatives for the library.
Is that something that you pay a rest payment, or something?
Yes, I'll do that. If you'd write, if you nominate me, I sure would, I mean, I'm on the Friends of the Library anyway. The library is a passion of mine, I definitely have library's interests in.
Okay, this is a reflection on that one, mentioned, but I do want you, I'm glad we've encouraged you to put it in there. Okay, we have a, a motion to the, uh, point.
I'll make that motion.
Wants Lisa Russo to the, and the Regional Library. Second, okay, all approves if you can, all opposed, white sign. This time?
Next is the reappointment of the Roadman Board members, Debbie Beasley and Marshall McColl.
Dave Marshall does a lot of work for us, I expect that.
He currently visits the signs and stuff, yeah.
I know that. And I've seen.
He's been on it for several years, he and Debbie, she's the postmaster, so.
Have a motion?
Yes.
Have a second, any discussion or comment? All approved, all opposed, thank you.
Uh, next is the reappointment of jury commission member, Ms. Vala Quara.
How many statements nation on this, please?
Uh, we have, we have three members, it's Janice Stewart, Sue Lewis, and Vala Quara, they've served for several, several years. And, uh, she picks the jury. They go through the list and pick, actually pick out who to be called for the jury. They've done it for years and, uh, they do, they do a good job, I've never heard a complaint, other than we call for jury. Not, and not a complaint on Lorraine's being a board member. We choose one and this, and the, and the state chooses two.
Who are the other Janice and Del?
Janice Stewart and Sue Lewis.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion for Commissioner Reeves? We have a second, this board? Any question or comment? All approve. Thank you.
All right, uh, next will be the monthly status report, C V G, twelve dash C dash two four one seven and ten dash C dash two two three one, which is the, uh, the senior center. I'm sorry, one is scattered side housing and the other is the senior center, I wanted to clarify that. The scattered side housing grant is going through a process, nothing really to report as far as any made progress being made there. On the senior center, as we've discussed a little earlier, there is a lot of progress happening up there. If you're interested to stop by, uh, I suggest you take a look at it, they're, they're moving right on. It's looking good, the machine was on the roof and it's printed up and, uh, there was, when was the door setting inside?
That has no different deadline, I think, isn't it?
I think so, I, I think that they're, the way, the way it's moving right now, uh, I think they'll, they'll be there, well, before then.
Right.
There are a couple of items that were discussed today at the senior center meeting. Number one, and I mentioned these in the workshop prior to the, the regular board meeting, is in behind the senior center with design, there is a large drainage ditch and there's discussion on putting some pipe in that ditch and covering that off and leveling it off. Uh, that pipe's for search and purposes naturally, you know, with the level areas, it's gonna be easier to maintain, landscape wise. And also this pipe will be a, a drainage system for the gutters coming out of the building. As we discussed, uh, most gutters run into a four-inch pipe, uh, this, this pipe would need to be larger, probably about an eight-inch pipe or something like that.
Will we have to have a change order for that? Everybody know? We do have to have a change order, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I don't have any, any amounts, but I know that as this, uh, this particular item comes up and, uh, it will be needed and it will be more aesthetic and functionality available at the senior center.
Okay, I, I know this board, we do, I agree this board, do calling, talk a little bit of progress on this, uh, you know, once you come up with a figure on that.
Okay.
Let's talk to you about it.
Okay.
And we have to have the change order again.
I'll have to proceed and ask a change.
Okay. That will be done. And the second item, you'll probably want to do the same thing, uh, because I don't know that it's actually gonna just affect the cost any, but you said there in regards to the sidewalk in front. Right now it's designed to have an eight-foot sidewalk on across entirely in front of the, uh, senior center. Too much. If we look at doing a six-foot in front of the main entrance so that it meets ADA, we're gonna actually get a bigger turning radius for the vans coming through the, uh, the cover, uh, driveway there. And have that six-foot for, for the amount of length that we need for ADA and then have the sidewalk step back to a five-foot step sidewalk that will match, uh, the five-foot sidewalk on the area in the middle. Aesthetically, it's gonna look a lot better, it's gonna gain some functionality, because we want to gain two feet of roadway so the vans, as they are pulling through, uh, the unloads on that, cover up.
You will actually have curbs? Curbs, you'll have, you'll have curbs. I don't want to be insidious about it, but, now, I don't think there's a part anymore.
I, I don't see it requiring a change order because I would say that, you know, whatever we lose in concrete's gonna get made up and additional asphalt.
That's always wrong, you're right. But that'd be, that'd be a couple yards, wouldn't it? Two feet of that length. Okay. All right, so we'll be looking forward then to the change order on the one.
Yes, sir, the change order on the drainage pipe. And, uh, and if you want to accept the sidewalk, assuming you can do that now, or would you rather do that in the future?
I mean, you said that you didn't have a change order on that. Unless the contractor needs to have that, David, what do you think?
Uh, it's redundant to give.
I know it is.
They lack the change order, it's less concrete, but.
And like you said.
I see that as a law.
Okay, but this necessitates that, we want to make sure we get it done, right?
Yeah, the contractor will do that as well as us. So, we're fine with all of that.
Just agreement of the board, I don't think it takes that.
But you might want to let it stay, I don't think you might want to let it.
All right, with that, I have an understanding is, we'll be having a change order regarding drainage to come to us between Zook and the P O L. But right now they're asking for approval for the change in sidewalks. Have a motion? Have a second, any special comment? All approve, all opposed, thank you very much.
All right, um, next, uh, workshop.
I need approval on the, uh, status report.
Thank you very much. All right, um, there's two reports on the C V G, close C twenty-four seventeen and on N C dash twenty-two thirty-one. Have a motion in the executive boards? Have a motion?
Yes.
We have a second, any question or comments? All approves if you can, all opposed, white sign.
Uh, next is the tax bill, her workshop, uh, Mr. Dennis Lance, and the present use value, I think that, uh, and you may also reset this, Chairman Edwards, uh, where you're going to try to gather some more history on this particular proposal.
Is that the board's decision to do that? Okay, we'll do that, so we'll say.
Okay. Uh, next is the adoption of a resolution, uh, pretty sure this is in regards to the rural center monies for the, uh, the hub, which is a local new, a new local business going in there here in bypass, uh, in county town and, uh, has been active showing economic development in Grand County. And this is one of the new businesses that is coming out, so. That resolution is, uh, is there for you and I would need to get more action to, uh,
It should be.
Get the signatures there.
Yeah, let's see, there was, uh, this was an agreement? I think the board needs to buy it on that, I think I understood it. I know that the Sequoia Fund and Southwest Commission.
Yes, sir.
Who were involved in, uh, them receiving, I think, forty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Through the Sequoia Fund from low, from Southwest Commission. And our part in this on the adoption of resolution has to do with the monies to match.
It's a two thousand dollar, but if you're in the resolution, I, I, I think it's the one in front of you with a letter of agreement, if any, you have.
The, the owners of the property have agreed to provide that match.
Come on over. About your doctor, Ken, for. There's a letter of agreement.
Can I read this, please?
You may. Yes.
This agreement is to establish the guidelines between Laura Properties LLC and the state of J L Phillips and the county of Grand for the first draw of grant funds from the N C Rural Center grant titled The Hub. Laura Properties LLC, the state of J L Phillips, is to present a check to Grand County for five percent of the grant provided by the N C Rural Center, totaling two thousand dollars, accompanied by all invoices of work that has been completed for the project known as The Hub. In turn, Grand County will issue a. In turn, Grant County will issue a check from the North Carolina Rural Center grant funds for approved invoices to Laura Properties LLC, the state of J.L. Phillips, and the amount of one half of the total invoices for the first request of funds. Proceeding requests for grant funds will be handled as detailed in the grant guidelines. So this base of that makes.
There's, there's three parts. There's another part and then the actual, uh, resolution will be attached on the other one.
There is no more. It's the same.
Okay, it's the same, there's, okay, there's a resolution somewhere. What are they?
Here, sir. Yes, sir.
That's the same. That's another letter, making that the actual resolution.
Right. Okay. All right, is everybody understanding on that, then? The rural center line? And we've made, okay, all right. Is everybody, is there anything on that? It's gonna be, that's right down here, the, there's the chowers.
The big B.
The big B down here. I'm gonna open up the, uh, I think it's a theme.
It's a bottle, little coffee shop, being a land access.
Yeah, he, he has the, uh, the small box for hot.
Right.
Which they operate out there. We're, we're satisfied as I say.
We are. Okay, then, we'll go ahead. We have a motion that we adopt the resolution on the other. We have a motion? We have a second? All right, any discussion or comment? All approved, if you want to stand. All opposed?
Okay, uh, next, uh, you have for your resolution regarding leasing property. Uh, Grant County is looking to enter into a, uh, a lease agreement. Uh, we have some property that a, uh, private company is looking to, uh, to lease from us and, uh, this attorney, Cody, can keep me straight on this if I get off track. Uh, the intent of the resolution is to establish this lease with, uh, Boston West Fiber Net, uh, on a piece of property located over here just next to our government's spacious office, which is a piece of property. Uh, this lease document will lay for ten days and will allow for the opportunity for, uh, someone else to step in and upset the, uh, president of our own lease that they have offered on this property. I'm not sure why anyone would, but, uh, and, uh, the board commissioners have every right to reject any and all bids and I will be having, uh, the CEO of Boston West submit a, uh, checking amount of five percent of the bid amount, which is three hundred dollars a month over five year period, which will be roughly nine hundred dollars for that lease maybe.
All right, we have, we have kind of been sitting on this and I've looked at it a lot and I've been, I guess we're free now in council. All right, with this, um, we have a great opportunity and I'd like to ask our manager to kind of elaborate a little bit of what this is about and put it in terms that I can understand.
Go ahead.
About how important this, uh, this project is, uh, to Grant County.
Very well. Uh, Grant County has been, uh, I know that for a long time we've been looking out for ways to, uh, expand business, to economic growth. Uh, we have got opportunity, uh, with the, the installation of the MCNC fiber optic line, which is gonna carry itself into Tennessee. Uh, that connection for Grant County is substantial whenever it comes to, uh, the opportunities that can be afforded to us branching out connectivity wise, data wise. We have had a, uh, fiber optic connection coming from the Andrews area for a number of years and that fiber optic connection was built without the anticipation that, uh, we would ever have another link into Tennessee. It was a, it was a large build out. They assumed that everything in Grant County, whatever came in on that leg caused spur, would have to be sent back on that leg. Uh, that's great. You get fiber optic cable that way. It's hard to attract a company to move here if you've just got a single source of, you know, lead fiber. Because if it gets cut, you're done and you're done. Recently, with the commencement of the MCNC, uh, build out and install fiber into Tennessee, it has put Grant County in a position unlike a lot of other areas in the southeast. We are now going to be connected, hardline connections. We'll have two going into Atlanta, Georgia, two going into Charlotte, and two going into Tennessee. You've got six connections, which is a, a major infrastructure setup. Uh, many other cities now have two, much larger than Grant County, but just due to our geographical location and the traffic line that is gonna be coming through Grant County, it puts us in a, uh, in a really good position to be able to attract, uh, data companies. We've been in negotiations with, uh, Boston, with Boston West and, uh, because they have been an integral partner with Grant County years back, whenever this initial spur was put into Grant County, uh, to establish a point of presence here. And what that is, is basically, uh, all this fiber optic lines that we have had put into the ground in Grant County is fine, but it's like a freeway with no off-ramps, okay? That's what this is gonna provide. This is gonna be a, a, uh, a facility that is going to be able to manage data coming through Grant County. And this facility is going to allow a future builds out, build outs for Grant County and, uh, we, we are really, really excited about this because now we have the opportunity to not only save on Grant County, uh, the great people, the natural resources that we have here, but, uh, we, we have a real connection to businesses who want to locate here for no other reasons than to manage that. And, uh, it's a great opportunity that, uh, we see, uh, to work with governmental agencies. Uh, they own a substantial amount of land here. They could put some new facilities on their land to, uh, you know, integrate in County. There, we have that opportunity to manage because of the connect, connect here. This resolution is, uh, set forth to, uh, honor this agreement that we are trying to put forth with Boston West Fiber Net, uh, to stay within statute guidelines. We need to, uh, allow this resolution to, to lay for ten days before it's in full effect. In that amount of time, we have, uh, we, we, it will be posted in, in the newspaper that, uh, someone can come in and, uh, try to upset that bid and it'll be stated in there what they have to do to do that. As with our relationship with Boston West, uh, we have a substantial, very, very good relationship so far and, uh, the board of commissioners has the right to reject any and all bids. So, with that, if you would like, I would want to have you to, uh, to manage that in the bid process so that we can ensure that, uh, everything here is.
We can act on resolutions, United Council?
Yes, because what it says you read is one, you propose to accept the offer, but send money. That's what triggers the advertisement is that the board wants to accept the offer. And so that, that triggers, that triggers the advertisement. Um, and like it's part of it, um, it says that any person has the right to raise this offer, but we also put words in there, uh, for the purpose of building a telecommunications communication facility at that location. So, somebody walking in, can't just walk in and say, oh, I want to increase the offer to lease it to, you know, a main station. It's gonna be part for the same purpose, so.
And, and given no problem for upset, it will be, you know, commensurate on all this partnership of twenty thirteen.
Okay, twenty thirteen. And how about the other party? Are they aware of this?
Uh, I have tried to reach out to Chairman Troy, the CEO of Boston West, and I haven't been unable to reach her back.
Okay.
We talked on Friday, uh, we're still trying to sort everything out until we're up to call on her. They're, they're fine with, uh, moving this lease forward and, uh, you know, I think. So I, I'll be reaching out to her for sure, but, uh, they're, they're excited about trying to get something.
And I'd like to add something else, too. Uh, the council and, and our manager and others are working diligently on this and trying to make sure all the, the Ts across and the dots are right. But one of the other things about this co-location, this, uh, this point of presence, it's called the POP, is that, uh, whenever they have a client come in and use, and they use that, the county stands to make a revenue, uh, from that, that client coming on board. And what this, uh, pretty much does, it completes a loop. It's a, it's a very, very strategically located inhole, as they call it, that goes and completes that loop all the way around Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
Going, going into the Atlanta area. And I think our, our manager said it in a good way in some discussions earlier. It's kind of like having the international airport sitting, sitting on one twenty-nine. Uh, I think, I don't know if folks fully understand that yet. But what this done also, and I want to go ahead and say this very, I don't think I'm reaching anything in regards to the RFP. Uh, this is gonna free up other revenues that we're standing to, to achieve. At a hundred eighty thousand dollars, being able to get what we call last mile, uh, the proposed back in these hoppers that where they don't have internet access, is that we wanna be able to have that RFP, which is already out.
Yes, sir. That transmits to medical.
And now we're waiting for folks to do that to where they'll come in and say, well, yeah, we'll go ahead and have this technology to be used, uh, in order to expand what already exists or to come up with some better ideas about, uh, tapping on that. So what's been to gain in this is, is, uh, really something that a lot of other parts of the country, not just the state, uh, don't have. And that's having this intersection between these, uh, very huge, high-tier boppers. So I've learned a lot about it in this and I am excited about it and, uh, and with the go-ahead from our council, but, uh, I, I, you know, I'd like to ask the board for a resolution that we go ahead and have this with the understanding of the, of the bid process and, uh, we go ahead and adopt the resolution regarding leasing the property.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
We have a motion?
Say.
We have a second? Any questions or comments?
Uh, sir, would you, uh, would it be the desire of the board since we don't have a meeting until mid-August for me to be able to manage the, the ten day bid process for the board?
I think that'd be, that could be done. We can be agent of county.
And that way I would be acting on behalf of the council.
I have a motion.
Okay, I think put the motion then. I think you'll handle the bid process. Okay, then, we have that in form of a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion or comment? All approved? All opposed? And thank you to council and all others in the trade and stealth and the board, because it is done. It's not gonna take, if we go ahead and all that, I don't think it will. We're sitting there on a conference call with, uh, it's one thing, legend, uh.
I think that's all we have unless there's any new business to add.
Uh, it's a, a date on the massive range boat, Brian.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I have, uh, with the photos and a write-up that, uh, Mr. David Hyde provided on the massive range boat ramp. Uh, I have been in contact with, uh, the district ranger Lauren Stoll. Uh, we've had several discussions over the ramp as well as, uh, as directed. I have sent, uh, David's write-up, a letter and photos to our federal, uh, representatives and senators. I have not heard back as of yet from, uh, the folks in the federal. Uh, the letter was delayed because in the beginning I had, uh, sent out the US Forest Service to get their statement on, on what was going on and I did not receive that until early July. So, once that was, uh, once that was received, uh, I got the, I got the write-up photos out to, uh, our, uh, federal legislators. I will say that, uh, Lauren and the US Forest Service has, uh, she understands the concerns. Uh, she has expressed a strong interest in resolving what issues they, they can. Some of the issues as stated cannot be addressed until this winter, whenever water levels will go down. But they are considering taking that walkway out of the hill and moving it to one side. Uh, that way it's gonna create a bigger ramp, uh, for access. They are open to ideas and, uh, I will be going back to the city and stall in the coming weeks and we will have to sit, we're gonna sit down and have further discussions on, on what, what is the intent to be done by the US Forest Service. Uh, as those meetings develop and any information that comes out, uh, will be notified. I'll make sure there was that thing.
I'd like to clarify something. When I was, when I brought this up the other night, I wasn't talking about infrastructure out there and then I think they done an excellent job.
Yes, sir.
Designed.
To, to, uh, follow the design that I seen. It took somebody with some knowledge to decipher that.
Right.
And do a good job that they did.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad that these boys from Grant County got the job. It's, uh, somebody from out here, which they usually do, uh, the forest service. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm thrown off on the job that the men, uh.
No, sir.
But the forest service and while I was designing.
Yes, sir.
Of the boat ramp is what I did like. It wasn't the boys that built it, that anything, that they should have because they done it exactly what they.
Yes, sir.
Know of the plan.
And I, I, I don't think anyone, uh, felt like that you were insinuating anything like that.
Absolutely. I, 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 I have a comment, too.
Okay.
I just thought that I was not, nor not on our end.
Yes, sir.
Because you told somebody with some knowledge, uh, I was looking at that plan that I seen and I didn't see what it looked like. I had to decide for that.
Yes, sir. I certainly understand. And the response that I got back from the US Forest Service, uh, that it was stated that, that ramp, uh, was built in accordance with, uh, the voters' safety. I can't remember the name of the acronym right now and in conjunction with any ADA guys that are under the discretion of the US Forest Service. And the letter that I wrote to our federal legislators, I pointed out the fact that obviously the guidelines that the engineers at the US Forest Service have in regards to ADA are much different than anything else in the rest of the type of policy. So, uh, we will be, uh, it will be, it will be, uh, interesting to see what, what responses from that will be. But, uh, I will say that our, uh, Mr. Mayor has been good work with the CBG.
A lot of times, our Saturday afternoon always have a, a tournament. They do park all up in the old buildings, yard.
Wow.
There was so many out there. And so few spaces to park.
Yes, sir. Um, I think that is it as far as any sort of, uh, that this kind of dates.
Well, personally, I, I don't do the social media that much, but I, I did go onsite and, um, I heard a lot on social media about some of the fishermen and some of the, the posts that they put out there about how that's not very using a friendly ramp at all. And then some of them have actually damaged their boats, trailers already.
A lot, sure.
Yeah, it's, uh, and I didn't even think about it, but, you know, that's just one of the things. And I hope whatever the fix is gonna be, that it's not gonna cost as much as they spent trying to get it done.
Uh, so we estimate, was it five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for that ramp?
How much?
Five hundred and over five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
I would have to be, no.
I'm, I'm just, uh, oh.
Last, last number I saw was five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
Now, there, there may be. I think I got some of the email script, threads on that and I'll have to see about the rest.
Yes, sir.
That's for the shore engineer, well educated, designing. I don't plan to wait on the company. I can point out to us a track over in the picture later. Five, oh, ten more time and put a walkway over into water that can step in any, any time. But I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, we'll put them in flash, if anyone wants.
You went to a different school, Billy, yeah?
Yeah, different school.
I highly rate your school.
All right, with that, then, uh, uh, any questions or comments for our manager?
I want to say it's good to see Miss Connie work well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's really good to be back and, and I would like to thank everyone who sent cards and called and brought food and, and just really kept us in your thoughts and prayers. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
All right, with that, are there any? All right, with that, are there any viewer or business issues to address? If not, Juanita, we're gonna have a recess here and I wanna be sure to get your documents signed so you don't have to hang around all night. All right, so, uh, with that, we'll have to have a motion if you could, please, go to post section. TS one forty-three, three eighteen, one, the head of May, one, three six. Through this conversation, information, attorney, client, privilege, personnel and contracts. We have a motion?
Sixty-nine.
We have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we can have about a ten minute recess?
Question.
About a ten minute recess.